All right, good morning everybody. Thanks for coming out this morning, early in the morning. I want to introduce myself first. I'm Ron Diablo-Stratton. I'm here to plan a secret meeting to destroy Bella Vista. Or so, I understand from everything I've been reading in emails and social media and everything the last few days, it certainly seems like I see a lot of things that seem to start with Chairman Stratton is planning to do this, or present this, or that these -- it's going to be a secret meeting, and a draconian proposal that we've already decided on, and his agenda, and all this kind of stuff. You know, I don't know how you answer those things. Most of them are by blind copy, and you can't answer them. You can't, as much as I say, "No, it's not true. This meeting's always open." "No, votes are only taken on Thursday evenings." "No, we haven't presented anything." It doesn't matter, you know? The most recent ones from the last couple of days are, "Oh my goodness, this board should recuse themselves and not consider anything in the valley because they're lame ducks." Now, I'm not sure if they mean just the two of us are going off the board, or the other two also who are running for reelection for the board, or it doesn't seem to matter that none of us have expressed an opinion or views on what we recommend from here, but somehow they've already been told we have, and it's not in their best interest, so best to try to get rid of them and get somebody who maybe take our chances on anybody else who happens to be elected. We continue with this. I get it from both sides with a huge divide, with a lot of the emails that we get. On the one hand, we've got the people who are, "Save Burksdale at all costs. We don't care," and then they selectively take their bias of why we should do that. And then we've got the, "How in the world can you keep money into the golf courses, the anti-golf, because it makes no logical sense?" And both sides of them only choose the things they think support their argument and do that. For us, for the board, we've taken this in a stepwise fashion for more than a year. Very careful, stepwise, to determine what we have, present it as objectively as we can. People on either side of that argument, of course, claim that we're biased. And now we plan to move forward, to evaluate. We've given all options, and find some reasonable, stepwise decision-making process to move forward. And, you know, I make light of it, but still, it's disappointing, it's difficult. We understand this is probably the toughest challenge we've ever had in Bella Vista. There is no easy answer. And people are going to be strongly opinionated on one side or the other. It's hard enough without all this stuff going out that gets people all riled up based on false kinds of accusations and statements. It's to the point where, you know, golfers berating our employees at the golf clubs, and these guys, people at the golf clubs saying, "Ron, you can't believe the crap people are saying about you," and this sort of thing. So, it gets a little ugly. And I'm sorry to see that sort of thing. I wish we could move forward better. But I can tell you, this is the most fun volunteer job I've ever had. But we are going to move forward in the best way we can. We've not made statements, but we are working on doing things. There are no draconian proposals. Nobody's trying to push anything. Everybody is trying to go forward in a stepwise kind of fashion. And I certainly hope that the future boards will do the same thing, because we'll be dealing with these issues for years to come, that's for sure. So, with that opening statement, we can move on to the agenda, which begins with open forum. Property owners are certainly welcome to come address the board as they always are in public forum.
Please use the microphone and stand towards the center. The orange one, red one, right next to you. We're live streaming this on Facebook, so, yeah, right about there. Thank you.
Working? It's not working.
You won't hear it.
Oh, you won't hear it, okay. I won't hear it?
Yeah.
Ron? Yes?
I know in a short three years, almost, you turned from an angel to a devil, huh?
I go back and forth.
You have your horns on now.
I'm a little schizophrenic that way. Just ask my wife.
All right. I'd like to commend the board for all the work.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, excuse me. My name's Tommy Freitag. I think most of you probably know.
We have people on speakerphone, so.
Been here for about 16 years, so I've seen a lot of changes that have been made throughout the community. But anyway, I'd like to commend the board for all the work that they've done on this study about golf course flooding. You have spent many hours and allowed us all to understand that this has been a real concern. My thank you to all of you. I was unable to attend the 4/10 meeting on that Tuesday, but I have studied the material from that meeting a couple of times, and I'd like to make a couple of comments in regard to that. During the April 10 meeting at Riordan Hall, chairman, POA chairman stated, "At present, no decision has been made regarding any changes to the Kingsdale-Burksdale golf course or any other golf-related changes, including building a new course at the Arkmo land." I assume that Chairman Stratton's statement is still correct. Is it?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. The POA board has indicated another vote on increase in our monthly assessments in the near future that we desperately need. I think you all can agree to that, and we have needed that for a number of years. If the proposed assessment at the time passes, then we could look into what avenues we might want to take with our present problems with golf courses. Without an assessment increase, I am not sure it would be a viable option in attempting to build a $6 or $7 million course on the Arkmo land, or spending $3.7 million on bridges and stream banks stabilization. Too much debt to recover with the existing fee structures that we have. It would only increase fees for golf and other amenities, resulting in less play. And what we want is more play on our golf courses. Another slide at the meeting on April 10 indicated that during the year 2008 to 2017, a 10-year period, we spent $1,343,000 on flood cleanup. So many members that I've spoken to believe that we should leave all alone and continue using the Kingsdale-Burksdale complex as presently used. That flood cleanup amounted to $135,000 annually, and we can definitely afford that every year. Our board should not consider making a decision at present that our membership would not approve until all avenues are considered. This is not an emergency, and should be carefully thought out to ensure that we are not left with debt that will create a negative response from our membership. Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy. Have you, that's well thought out. Have you sent that to us at our dedicated email?
No, hang on.
If you could do that, we appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
All right, thanks. Anyone else?
Appreciate the opportunity to address the board this morning. I have some concerns that I'd like to share with the board regarding communication. Before I do that, I would like to talk, or read a little bit about policy guidelines that the board established in August 18, 2000, or March 16, 2017, I believe, were unanimously approved. This is official POA publication, release of information guidelines. It's page 6.02, and I want to draw your attention to number one, guideline subset three. The chairperson of the board, or the chief operating officer, or their official designee shall be the only ones to issue press releases about association activities. Four, correspondence, emails, or social media received by all directors should be coordinated with the chairperson of the board so that only one reply is given. The chairperson or his or her designee will make the reply. And there are a few other guidelines here that I'm not going to take the time to read. My concern, which comes about from a communication standpoint, is that I was at a meeting last night, and, or yesterday afternoon, and what I heard over and over again is, "We get this email, we get this email, we get this email." One email says one thing, another email says another. Well, I want to talk a little bit about a director that I believe is violating this policy, and give you some information that I have available to back that up. April, on April 11th, at 10:29 in the morning, a, an email was sent out, and I want to read it. Chairman Stratton will be proposing a plan at the next board meeting to close Kingswood and Burksdale and build a new course on Arkmo. I would encourage the members of your group to email their idea or thoughts to board at floodstudy@bvvpoa.com. I'm reading this directly as it appears, so if the language doesn't seem quite right, I have no responsibility for that. If Arkmo happens, the POA is going to need $6 to $7 million. The POA's income sources are fees and assessments. The POA can keep Kingswood open for $500K to $700K, and about half of that will have to spend if it becomes a park. The POA can keep nine holes open at Burksdale for some cart path repair. Director Nuttall sent this out. I'm wondering if the chairman approved this announcement of meeting?
No. No, I didn't. I didn't see it.
There's also some troubling positions that are taking, one troubling position that's taken to me is the fact that the POA would be able to spend half of what it costs to keep the golf course open if it became a park. There's a member that's running for the Board of Directors, his name is Jerry Hofer. He has a 48-year career in parks and recreation. And I asked Jerry to tell me what it would cost to maintain a park. And he said, "I can't tell you that." He said, "Unless you could tell me what is included in the park. Does the park have natural grass growth areas? Does it have flowers? Does it have natural paths? Does it have concrete paths or asphalt paths? Unless you can tell me what composes the park, I can't tell you what it costs to maintain." He said, "I have had park responsibilities where 500-acre parks cost less to maintain than a 20-acre park." I'm very troubled that the vice chairman of this board would make a statement like that, and I don't have a reason for that. April 11th, at 11:51, there was another letter that went out to Dick Hartman. That was a draft for his plan, for John's plan for the ballot. Mr. Chairman, were you made aware of this plan before that date?
No, I wasn't.
Was any of the board made aware of this plan before the date?
Mr. Brooks?
I'm making a statement.
I often confer with members of the board.
I'm not, I'm making a statement, Mr. Nuttall. I'm not asking you for any response.
Also in that sharing of plan, you requested that Dick not share the information with That's when this first came to my attention. Apparently Dick sent this around, and I received three or four emails from different sources indicating that there's funding business going on in the board, on your board. I responded, well, before that happened, later in the day, when Dick sent this out, there was an email sent by John that said, "Good to know I can trust you, Dick." I got involved with a response to Dick on Facebook about his information, and Mr. Nuttall commented on my response, and I want to share some of these comments with you. I can share all of them because some of them are not pertinent. The board has not made up its mind about, we just heard, that we've not made up our mind concerning closing the golf courses or building a new golf course at Arkmo. Yet, Mr. Nuttall asserts, states here, and I have copies, these clearly are, and I would be happy to show anybody my phone, these are copies of messages that he sent to me. He's clearly identified here. You know, this is his response to me. "We spent $550,000 on branch wood. My main issue with Arkmo land is that we don't need five golf courses. On our current trend, round drop to 120,000 in four years. That is three golf courses. Why build a fifth?" To be fair with my position, I believe we need five golf courses. I went on to explain to John that 40,000 rounds on golf courses is too many to keep the condition of the golf courses playable. John's response to me was, "Climate cannot handle 40,000 rounds annually. This info came from David Welchel, as did all other golf course numbers. For your information, Naperville Country Club in Chicago plays 35,000, and they closed December to February." Well, members of the board, I called Naperville Country Club, phone number 630-355-0747. I talked to Matt, a professional golf shop there. I asked Matt what their annual rounds were. He said that they average between 14,000 and 15,000 rounds a year. I said to him, Matt, I said, "Matt, last year was unusually warm weather. I'm sure you played more." He says, "Yeah, we had about 18,000 rounds." That's a far cry from 35,000 rounds, that I was told. Then he included a chart that was shown at the presentation that shows actual and projected rounds here in the POA, and I questioned that chart, and I asked him where he got his information, and he said, "It's projection of the, is the extension of the POA's 10-year trend line. It parallels the projection of the USGA." So, I called the USGA. Phone number's 908-234-2300. Talked to a young lady there, asked her, told her what I was trying, the information I was trying to gather. She gave me, or transferred me to a lady named Nancy. The USGA does not collect information on rounds of golf played in the United States, nor does it put together trend lines on golf, golf rounds played in the United States. We went on to discuss the nine holes at Burksdale, and the cost associated with that, or fixing it. And while I know that it does cost money to keep these golf courses open, I asked if we're not, if we're not going to have the, if your idea is not to have the golf course open eventually in the future, why have all 18 holes open? And his response is, "It costs nothing to keep nine holes open." My concern for this board is that you have mixed messages coming from it. I was speaking to a board member. Everybody that gets an email with John Nuttall, with Ron Stratton, with Jim Abrahamson, with Ruth Adger's name on it, is a board member, or anyone else's. It seems to me the person that has an agenda that's trying to be forced upon this community is the vice chairman of this board. Seems to me that the communication that he's using is off the cuff, ill-informed, and is not a good representation of this board, and is not fair to our community. At the very least, and certainly he's violated policy, at the very least, he owes this board and this membership an apology. With any dignity, he should think about resigning. I serve on a, I was asked to serve on an advisory committee with it. We're in the middle of our processes, and I could not in good conscience put my name on a report that has him included as a member of that report. I appreciate your time. I support your future endeavors. You're doing a great job.
Good morning. Billy Beveridge. Been here eight since, say, 1985. I'm not here, but I'm a property owner. Yesterday, I went to the golf meeting Bill Barrow runs, and shared some data with that team and everything, and I just want to present to the board the same data that I've been collecting, and I also want to challenge the board. I don't know if you guys have actual numbers, you know? We did the hydrology study, and you guys have given us four options. Okay, out of those four options, we're pursuing, that's what I'm pursuing, putting out with my golf group, Golf and Boogers, that I run, and we have 110 members. And out of that 110 members, so far, I've got 49 votes back, which is 45% of our group, and I'm still trying to get it by, more by next Thursday, your next Thursday POA meeting. And that, right now, the votes stand, we have 30 votes for option one, which is 62%. We have two votes for option two, which is 4%, that's to close Burksdale, Kingswood, and build a Arkmo. Option one was to keep Burksdale and Kingswood as 18-hole golf courses. Option three is keep Burksdale nine, Kingswood 18, kind of as it is today, and then option four is to close both of them, or close Burksdale and keep the Kingswood 18. But option three, I just, we got 15 votes, which is like 31%, and option four, we've got two votes, which is 4%. That's the actual input numbers that I'm getting from our golf group. And our golf group consists of anywhere from really pretty good golfers down to beginners. We've got a lot of wives out there that are just starting, you know, and that's their input, too. They like Burksdale, they like Kingswood. Well, we don't play Kingswood because it's not conducive to shotgun start. But that's the actual input we're getting. And when I asked the committee that yesterday, you know, "What are they doing? Are they polling the community? Are they, you know, getting numbers?" I really didn't get no answers. Ms. Ruth here, she said that, you know, hearsay, you know, that she hears a lot of stuff, and I'm asking, have we documented that hearsay? Are we taking that down? Are we writing the numbers down to do what the Bella Vista's want? Not necessarily. You know, are you guys representing us by the data that we're giving you? That's what I'm asking. I'd like, you know, Tommy and I will, we'll take all four options, put them on a poster board, and go set at the golf course at a shotgun start, and try to get input. I asked Bob Croner, our MGA president, to do that last Tuesday, and it didn't happen. But we're just trying to get the word out, to get input. I mean, are we doing something that's effortless, or should we continue to get this? Do you want our input? Do you want our feedback? What's the right thing? I mean, what are you, and what is the board doing to get actual golfers' input? I know it's not just a, we're not just a golfing community. We have over 30,000 people now, so I understand, but I think, I feel it's the golfers that need to make the decision about our golf courses, not the other 30,000 or 25,000 people. So, that's.
We, we want, we want the opinion of everybody. That's why we have set up the email address that you can send, so any of that information, please send it. One thing that would be helpful on that, obviously each of these options that we've talked about have costs associated with them. So, if you could, you could also include that when you ask them if they have a certain preference, how much would they be willing to pay to have those options? That'd be constructive for us.
Yeah, it's all on the website, and that's what I refer them to, to go to if that's the case.
Director Welchel is attending via conference call. David, can you repeat what you said? It didn't come over well.
No, I did not, I didn't make a comment there.
Oh, somebody did. Who else is on there?
Someone did.
Okay. Anyway, anyway, yes. Is Pat on? Okay. So, that'll be helpful. I mean, as you know, we have different options. We've laid out the costs associated with that. We do represent, we have a certain amount of money that comes in from assessments every month that gets distributed to all of our amenities. Certainly, the golfers are more interested in golf than others, and, yeah, we sit here all the time with things like, "Okay, I don't play golf. I don't think any of my 24 should go to golf." Well, I don't play tennis, so I don't think any of us should go to tennis. So, you know, it's a balance in the whole community. And in each one of those things, it's always easy to say, but what we usually hear is, "Yes, here's what I want. I want it all, and I don't want it to cost me anything." So, we don't know what to do with that information. But if you can lay out things to say, "Within these options, these are our preferences, and this is what we think we'd be willing to pay to get those preferences," that'd be very helpful.
And that's all on the website, right? That's all on the four options? All that data is on there?
That's not what he's asking you. He's asking you that when so-and-so says, "I want option number one," what are they willing to pay extra? Are they willing to pay $10 extra to play golf to get that option? Is what he's asking.
Yeah, I'm asking you to provide that information.
Well, that information's not on there. I don't know what to tell them.
Well, I'm asking you to ask them, and you can tell us. So, if they say, "I want Kingswood and Burksdale open," you say, "Okay, how much would you be willing to pay to have those open? How much more would you pay to make sure we have those open?" That's what would be helpful to us, because it's easy to say, "Well, I want everything." Of course, we all do. But you say, "Well, how much would you be willing to pay for it?" Well, nothing. We don't know what to do with that.
Well, how much is enough? I don't know what to ask. I mean, I can't put a number for that.
In the past, every time we raised fees, it seems to be that less people play, because certain people.
Oh, I totally agree with that.
So, there's a breaking point, that they play and pay, or they won't. We want to know what the people that you're talking to are willing to pay to get what they want. That's what we're asking.
So, if you can help provide that information, that would be helpful.
Right now, they pay, and I can't even tell you whether they pay $24. Is that what they pay $24? I think so. If they don't have an annual fee, they pay $24. Are they willing to pay $35 a round? Are they willing to pay $39 a round to play if they can have that, their wish, their vote?
We're very aware that the golfing population doesn't want to lose golf courses and options to play golf. We're very aware of that. As I get around and gather information before I'm golfing in other locations, we're standing there before the shotgun, and we're talking, and somebody will ask me a question about, "What are you going to do?" You know, so I start, I engage in conversation with that guy, and all of a sudden, it's just two of us. Everybody else has drifted away. They don't seem to want to know, either that or I'm boring, I don't know. But they don't want to know how the sausage is made. And lately, when it's boiled down to the comment I get is, "Make the end decision already. Let's get on with it. Whatever we're going to do, let's go." So, we're trying to go.
So, Billy, however you want to collect that information, it's helpful. We want it. We want to look at it. We understand the opinions, and we're trying to represent the best interests of everyone. I'm a golfer myself. I want all the golf courses, too, but, you know, we have the realities here. So, within all those, if you can also provide that to say, "Yes, we want it," and by gall as golfers, "We're ready, we're willing to pay more to make sure we get it," that'd be helpful, too.
Okay, but is that not something that you guys, the board, can put on the options? I mean, what that, I mean, I hear what you're saying, that I need to go ask some, a little more of my group, but as a board.
I mean, you could, you could calculate that easy yourself. On it is, it shows the costs of maintaining each golf course, and you can look at it and say, "How much more per round would we have to pay for this?" So, it's easy to do. We haven't, we haven't included that as a part of a proposal now. We've just said, "Here are the four general options," and now we go on to the next process.
Okay, but you as a board, what are you guys doing to collect data, to collect input back from the golfers themselves, besides what I'm doing? I mean, what would you guys, what can you guys do to do that, to get that information?
We'll, we'll discuss if there are other things we can do. We presented all the information we have from more than a year of work, and we've invited comments at three public meetings, and we have put a dedicated email to say, "Please comments at three public meetings, and we have put a dedicated email to say, please send things to us in writing, so that you can, and all of those things are more constructive than, you know, well, the most recent ones aren't so much, it's just, don't listen to the board with all this nonsense on the, on social media. But if you can do those things, we're going to gather all the information we, we can.
How much time do we have to gather that information?
We haven't set timelines on anything.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time and your, and your work, thank you.
Yep.
One comment.
Use the microphone if you would, Tommy.
One comment that he was talking about, and you're saying, how much more would be, people be willing to pay? Would that number be, we're talking three point seven million dollars to do the banks and the bridges and all that, would that be like over a period of ten years, or would that be twenty years, or just one year? If you look at it over a ten-year period, we're talking about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, we're playing a hundred and sixty thousand rounds, that would kind of equate to two dollars a round extra that they'd be willing to pay to get the courses in shape for the next ten years. Can they have some assurance that the golf rates won't go up any more than two dollars over the next ten years? Or will it go up two dollars this year, and we don't have enough money, we've got two more, pretty soon it's thirty-five dollars a round? That's what they're probably saying. Do we want to spend three point seven million dollars, and will that solve our problem and our green fees won't go up anymore? But what you're saying is it might be ten dollars more, and I don't think they're willing to pay ten dollars more.
Well, I think the main thing we'd be saying is, if you go through all the presentations, you'll see at the bottom line, there's a lot of question marks. Are floods going to come, and how much are they going to cost? And nobody can project that.
Tommy, before we go any further, my ten dollars were simply in the air hypothetical. My ten dollars were simply in the air hypothetical.
I understand.
I am not asking anybody to pay ten dollars more, so please do not equate my name with ten dollars.
You also have to keep in mind to use the right figures, and I'm hearing when people want to selectively do one thing, they also say, well, here's what we actually spent, and they exclude the five hundred and sixty thousand that we did not spend on Burksdale to try to get it reopened until we put a stop to it and say, what do we think we understand? So make sure you use all correct numbers, and, and all of that is, you know, general perspective is on, is on the website and with the video presentation.
But history, history tells us that we only spent about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for flood cleanup over the past ten years. I don't think that it's going to go up a great amount more in the next ten years. We will have floods, even if we do this work, we're going to have floods.
Yeah, and that's the challenge, too, because I know, I hear these opinions expressed, and we get, we get a different view from the professional hydrology company that we hired, so, okay, anybody else?
I have a comment to what you said. I had some very pointed questions for the hydrologists, and they didn't come back with very pointed answers. The gist of what he said was, you can do the work now, and it will take care of the problem as it exists today, but because of what we anticipate in the future, there are no guarantees that this will flood-proof your golf courses. New problems will develop. We anticipate, based on history, that our floods will continue to escalate in frequency and severity. So he hedged his bet, that, you know, I, I wanted to know, and that's what he said, so he said, you know, buckle up, we're on for a ride.
I can make another point, because I studied that number for the last sixteen years, as far as golf and everything else here, probably more than anybody else. Your point is good, but let's say, for example, we shut those courses down completely, we build a new course out at Arc Mo, it's going to cost us six or seven million dollars. Operation costs out there, I hope, would be the same as the golf operational cost here, about a million dollars a year, would it not? Or is it going to be two million out there? Nobody knows that number, do they? But let's assume it's a golf course, and it's costing us a million dollars to operate that golf course, just as each of our golf courses here. We shut two golf courses down, are we going to save two million dollars? We're spending a million now on each golf course. Are we going to save two million if we shut two courses down? Anybody studied that?
Of course not, let's go back in a moment, and here's what's happening on this, we have presented the basic options, and, you know, some people say, well, you shouldn't even mention Arc, well, pretend like it's not there or not an option? Of course, you have to look at all of those. Now, if you want to go forward with this in a, in a logical stepwise progression, you would say, first, what is the golf demand, before you spend any other money? Then if you determine what the golf demand is, and we do need five golf courses, you figure out what your best options are, then you go on into engineering and, and all kinds of evaluation of that. That's a lot of work, but now, but I get emails saying that somebody has said, Ron Stratton already decided we're closing down the golf courses and building one in Arc Mo. It's absurd, but, but, you know, and now we're answering questions, you want us to answer a question like that, that is step forty, and we're at step two.
And what I'm saying in my opening remarks, we need to wait and see if we get an assessment increase. If we get an assess, assessment increase, it puts a whole new picture on this whole thing.
All right, the only thing I would say to that, Tommy, is I would look at it a little bit in the opposite, which is, if you're going to vote for assessment increase, I'd say, well, what's it for? To me, the board has to say, here is an overall grand strategic plan for Bella Vista, for our vision, for golf, for our valley, for everything for the future. You figure out what we want, what it's going to cost, where you, where the various costs come from, and if you want to do these other things, it costs X amount per month. But I also would respond to say, somebody just says, well, I want twelve dollars a month or nine dollars a month. For what? So, you, you, so you're going.
That's the board's responsibility.
That's the board's responsibility, exactly, which is why in this, we need to douse the fire out of our hair a little bit, with everybody running around this way, evaluate what we have, take it in a logical, stepwise progression, a general plan going forward with how we're going to spend money, and what we're going to get, and what's it going to cost. That's what we're working to do. We're being distracted by this, by people putting all kinds of things out there, that this is not what's happening, you know, the chairman's already decided this, or he's trying to shove this down our throat, that's actually not the term that's used, but, but, and this sort of thing. So this is the way we're trying to do it, and everybody's all emotional because they're afraid some big draconian thing is already decided. That is not the case.
I think this whole thing could be solved this morning by saying, the board saying, we're not going to do anything in the next six months, we're going to study this thing and see if we can get an assessment increase, based, the assessment's supposed to pay for all our amenities, it has been that way all the time, but we've gotten away because inflation.
Okay, Tommy, that's, first of all, that's not true, I mean, we need to move on, but the assessment supports them all, so we have many of them that have fees, so it's a combination of assessments and fees, you know.
But, but our assessment has not changed in fifteen, eighteen years.
I agree with you completely. Had our assessments gone up reasonably over the years, I mean, we, we wouldn't even have to pay for golf, but, but that's the way we are, and that's where we find ourselves, and that's not the reality. So the board has to deal in reality, rather than in what each individual of the, of the thirty-eight thousand lots we have, and their individual personal opinion, and that's the challenge that we have, so, okay, appreciate it. Who's next?
Can I make, can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
I'll tell you what scares, what scares me, and it, and it relates to Burksdale and to Kingswood and even the country club, but what scares me is the growth that continues to happen in Bentonville, in Springdale, in Rogers, in all the towns south of us, we're at their mercy when the rains come, absolute mercy, and it's not going to get better, it's going to get worse. And the flooding could be horrific, I'll bet on it, maybe not this year, maybe not next year, but in one of these years, it's going to be horrific, and it's going to cost a lot of money to fix, and it disheartens me about Burksdale. That's it.
Randy?
As you well know, I'm Randy Wyatt, lived here since two thousand and seven, and I don't get emotional at all. But anyway, I just had a question for El Diablo. Of all, you've asked for a lot of people's input, a lot of other people's recommendations, and I think some of them may have been good, some of them are probably ridiculous. How many other ones, besides the four recommendations that you put on the street, how many more have gone onto your list as potential, as potential solutions?
First of all, let me tell you that since we did that overall presentation of the four major options, the board has not met again. There's a lot of work to do. Now, we understand, and as we described in those four basic options, you certainly could come down to sub-options and exactly how you would do those, there are many of them, so an awful lot of work to be done. But if we tried to do all of that in one presentation, first of all, we don't know, it's hard to even think of them all, second of all, it would be so complex, and you'd run down one rabbit hole after another and never be able to get out of it to come, come do it. So we recognize that fully, but we are not far enough in the process at this point.
But, but I was, I was just curious, because I'm sure some of the recommendations, even if you would consider it a sub-recommendation, should be put into the, the consideration for part of the solutions. I'm sure you have some good ones, there's a lot of smart people in Bella Vista that probably have come up with some reasonable and good ideas, and I'm going to, I'm going to have to apologize to you, because I talked to Tom at the meeting Tuesday, I guess it was, or Wednesday, yeah, yesterday, and I took a word out of one of your emails that said, I don't intend on doing anything draconian, and I told Tom, that I said to me, closing Burksdale and closing Kingswood in one year would be draconian. That was my comment, I apologize to you, I just wanted to use, I was using your word that I saw in one of your emails.
I would also agree that closing Burksdale and closing Kingswood in one year would be draconian. I can agree with you on that right now.
Thank you.
Now, that's the opinion that I just voiced, to one person and not of all the board, but that would be, would be my opinion. But I, what, what we need to do, in my view, and the board has got to get together and make sure we do it, is make sure everybody understands in this process, what do we know, and what do we not yet know? There are a few things we know, there are a lot of things that we not yet know, and a huge number of, of strong opinions on those things, but the fact is, we don't really know. You can have a strong opinion on what is the golf demand in Bella Vista, but we need professional assistance on that to be a bit more objective, I think. There are a lot of things you could do, so what do you do? You make decisions stepwise, you lay out a grand plan, and you lay out decisions stepwise based on what we know, and then you say, what are the next decisions going to be, based on what we learn, and we'll know at that time. So people somehow are terrified that we're going to set up this whole thing far into the future when we don't even know things, and so that's when they get into this fear, oh my gosh, study it and look at it. We will be getting back to you, it's a long, hard process, there's lots of work on this, and we need, want to do it in a stepwise fashion. If everybody would just stop with the personal attacks and innuendo and all this sort of thing, and work on this together, it would go in a more constructive fashion.
Well, I don't do personal attacks. If I was going to attack, I would talk to you face to face, just you and me.
I appreciate that.
Okay, and so, and I haven't done that, so, but what, what I do want to just reiterate, because I agree with the point you made, and I agree with the board, the courses will flood, okay? They will, I mean, you're right, they're going to flood, but to the severity that they're going to do, my opinion is, after I, I did the, I went and did some of the cost analysis of, and a hundred and forty-three thousand, in ten years, we spent a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year fixing flood damage, that's the average, now, some years are worse than other years. Okay, so we have a huge flood, we're going to end up spending three or four hundred thousand dollars to fix it, but I still think if you budget.
All right, all right, let's just stop there for, for a second, Randy, because people are using numbers that they want to do. The last flood that we had, the last big one, I don't know what we spent for the actual cleanup to get golf courses back open, you're right, a hundred and forty-three thousand or something, but in order to get Burksdale back open, it would have been required to spend five hundred and sixty thousand, which we did not spend. So these floods have gotten more severe, and in order to do it, it's looking like, you know, it's, it's not been the one hundred, it's more like five hundred above, and we have then these bridges we have to address, so I hear people selectively saying, well, you don't need all the bridges, or you can do this and this, okay? And they leave out the part, they think, well, we can get golf carts over, over here and there. Well, but you have to have structurally sound bridges to get mowers over, to get heavy equipment over, to get emergency vehicles, there are lots of things on this, so, you know, I understand that the views tend to be, well, here, I've done the numbers myself, I know it all, the board's stupid, they haven't looked at these. Well, we've spent a lot of times doing that, I didn't say you did, that's the, the emails I get that say that. So, anyway, please use the true objective numbers as you think this through, and, you know, we get a lot of stuff, too, well, I, you know, in my opinion, the floods are not that big a deal, they're not going to be that bad. Well, we can go forward in that, in that way, and then.
I use, I use the numbers that were in your, that were in your chart, that's where my numbers came from, all right? Those were the ones that were in your presentation when you put out the flood study option report. Now, five hundred, I didn't realize, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I didn't think it would cost nearly that much to make eighteen and under the bridge, so you sold me on that one, okay? I stopped fighting that issue.
Okay.
But, but I'm just talking about generally keeping things the way they are for now, and then pursue exactly what the details of Arc Mo, I mean, I think we need more than four courses, because one of them is, is limited, very limited in the wintertime now, so, so I really think we need a fifth course.
And, and I think we'll be getting back with you, or, and, and a stepwise say, to, to make sure we address things with factual information, and not, and more facts and less opinion, and then appropriate steps based on those facts.
Okay, I applaud that approach, and thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
And just one comment, Randy, the, that five hundred and sixty thousand dollar cost estimate that we got from engineers and from our maintenance staff occurred after the April thirtieth flood, and that was the main focus for us stopping for a minute and saying, let's get a hydrologist here, and let's do a study to see how worse it's going to be.
And that explanation is certainly germane and appropriate, and I, I agree with that.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Steve McKee. A lot of what I have has already been more or less talked about, but I wanted to just reiterate my opinion that we really do focus first on the, the big picture, or the grand, what do you call it, the grand plan, what that is, and once we know that, I think the decisions about what to do sort of solve themselves. From the slides, you know, it's apparent we're going to keep Country Club, we've poured a lot of money here, we should keep it, what's a country club without a golf course? But the other issue is, okay, we're really talking about Kingswood and Burksdale. Over the last ten years, as one person already mentioned, it's only twenty-four thousand for Burksdale average, and Kingswood was thirty-one thousand to fix the floods, so if they get worse, you know, where do they go to? The other issue, we took the average cost to maintain these courses of about two point two or two point four million, that the assessments cover the operating cost. All the courses are not the same, and, so I went back to the last numbers I had, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, the smaller numbers are the ones that lose the least, which are Burksdale and Kingswood. So, you know, if the big picture is to try to save money, we're closing the wrong courses. On the other hand, if the picture is something different.
Steve, we already saved, at this point, five hundred and sixty thousand by not reopening the nine holes of Burksdale, so it's just the opposite of what you just said, are the facts.
These are through twenty sixteen, what it costs to, the difference between income and expense. So I understand that there's bridge work, potentially seven million, so if we can't come up with five hundred, we sure can't come up with seven million. The issue, in my opinion, is, what's the big picture? And based on the slide presentation, the floods aren't really the issue, the two most popular courses are losing the least amount of money, so you put in five hundred thousand, they're still going to lose the least amount of money. You know, Highlands is up there, average loss of four hundred thousand. So the big picture is, is not what we used to be, but who we are today. We know that golf rounds are down, we know that we're not really competitive in the local market, we know that unimproved lots are coming back, we know that the low-hanging fruit there is being picked, we know that the trails are booming, we know that other recreation areas are booming, you know, we showed the. You know, we showed the picture of the golf rounds trending down. That's the red line. The flip side of that is the number of lots coming back are skyrocketing. It's, the, the big picture is, you know, who are we and where are we going in all of this? Remember the conversation a couple of years ago? If we close one of these courses, what's the message? You know, we have to be very careful what it is that we're presenting. Ten years ago, we had six courses, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand rounds, that's thirty-nine thousand per course. We could do five courses and support up to a hundred and ninety-five thousand rounds. If we exceed that, okay, well, let's maybe talk about building a new course. So what's the big picture? We could close one popular course in the flood pain, maintain it as a beautiful park. It's the front, front porch or the front yard. People drive through it there, it's beautiful. If we do it right, potentially, we could save a million dollars just by closing Burksdale. That includes maintenance, construction, reducing F and A expenses, closing the course, saving the maintenance, and then assuming that the number of golfers who play that course go to another course. So what I would encourage the board is to ask those questions about who are we, and then it seems to me that the answers about what to do take care of themselves.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, so now we'll have our secret meeting. That's not, I'm kidding, go on. All right, let's move on to the agenda then. The P O D or Pod Camping, capital request, Tom? Oh. Joan's going to do it. Good.
Tom.
Thank you.
Yes, so we're excited to ask for a vote in support of Glamping Pods. Think of these as small cabins that will be placed in Blowing Springs, that are a step up from yurts in some ways, more durable and cheaper. We've been talking about adding some avenue of increasing revenue at Blowing Springs. The park continues to increase in both RV utilization and tent camping has been very successful. This is sort of a medium mix for people that don't have their own RVs, and certainly, we all know that Bella Vista doesn't have hotel rooms. You have some pictures in your packet. They're very well-made. They're made right up the road in Missouri. And I'm requesting that we purchase one this summer. Their building queue is such that if we get in the queue now, we'll have a better chance of adding units in nineteen if this test becomes successful. Questions?
Do they have pictures?
What was the question?
Do the people on the back have pictures?
You handed out. Oh, no, you...
No.
We can have one out.
If anybody would like to see pictures, we can pass them around.
I have a question about the daily, are you talking about one night or two-night minimum? What about the maid services, linens, and all that? I'm sure you've got it figured out.
Well, that's part of the test, but great, great questions, David. We would try and keep the maid service to be a minimum. It, it's a very small unit, it's a hundred and fifty square feet, but yes, they're going to have to be cleaned after each checkout. Haven't got as far as the two-night minimum, but that's likely, maybe not during the test, as we want to get as many people to use the units during the test so we can find out all those things, trends and details. But might be such a thing where we offer a deal on a two-night stay. I think long-term, a minimum is, is probably imminent.
So the general idea is to do one of them as a kind of experiment to see how it works and if it's popular and that sort of thing, and if it, if it makes sense financially, and then potentially do more in the future.
Correct.
Yeah, we're looking at, on the right-hand side, if, as you go towards the second set of bathrooms on the upper area where they do the concerts, there's a large grassy area. That would be a really nice location for four, six, eight, something to that nature. But let's stick our toe in the water with one, see how it works, and then we'll go from there.
Do you have an idea of the dollars involved?
Yeah, we're predicting that we would charge in the hundred dollars a night range. We, I've been collecting data right up the road where they build them. They also have a campground on the Elk River, and they put them in place just last summer. They were sold out all summer, and they charge a hundred dollars. And it's not an aesthetically necessarily beautiful area, except that it is close to the, to the elk, so...
How many do they have?
They put four on the ground, but they're also the builders, so they can add some at any time.
Is there kitchen facilities or eating?
Um, I would call it a kitchenette light. So we'll plan to put a microwave in and a small fridge. That's it. No cooking.
Because I didn't see that.
Yeah.
That's pretty advanced.
It's, it's so well-made. It's woodsy, it's going to look beautiful in the park, and the construction is done well. But also, it's intimate, if that makes sense. Kids love it because it feels cocoon-like, but also, there's plenty of space. And then some of you may see on the pictures, there's even a deck out front, so you can have a seating area, so pretty, pretty cool.
I mean, we could do like a hundred of them, but that might be draconian. So maybe we'll do it stepwise with the information that we know, and then go on from there. So it might make sense to me.
Ron, you can take your...
Internally about...
Hey, as long as these are on, I'm, I'm going to stay the devil. I'll give my halo later. Anybody else have comments on this, in the board, or...
Hundred and fifty square feet. So there's plenty of room for sleeping bags and things like that if you have...
So depending on how it's set up, we would put a double or queen bed in. They're built with a frame, so all you have to do is drop the mattress in. And then you can, there's a little foyer area, you could put like a little bunk bed if you wanted, or you could leave that open for if they want to have a kid or two in there. The unit we're purchasing is all self-contained. We have, we don't have enough bathrooms to do this. Our existing bathrooms are quite heavily used in the RV park, so the units can come with a small toilet and shower, and so that's the unit we're purchasing because in long-term, I think that's the way we have to go. You can also feel like you can charge more for that. But they're, they're intimate.
Yeah.
But very functional.
The attraction is, you're kind of camping out, but you have an air conditioner, you have a bed, and you don't have to walk through the dark to go to the bathroom at night. And so they're, they're attractive, I know. People like them.
In the cost estimate, are you including the electric to the facility and water line?
So, so that's the beauty, yes, in the, the proposed. But the cost for this test will be nominal, because the plan is to hook up to the exterior of the RV park where we already have the fifty, it requires fifty amp, or where we're soon to have the fifty amp, and we'll be able to plumb over from the water line. So we're going to place it sort of at the end of the RV park where there's some green space for the test. Long-term, we'll have to look at the infrastructure for more years.
If we add some further, further to the...
Exactly.
And what's needed is we can, we can move this.
We will have that in there.
So when we relocate to the new area, if we go locate to the new area, we just pick this unit up and move it over there.
Joan, have you talked to the city in a minute?
Um, I did. It, we're, we're lucky on this test. There's really nothing that's needed. We are under the park designation, and it's considered an accessory building, and they don't have any special requirements. Long-term, if we have six or something units, we'll probably do a plan with them, but...
Any other comments on this?
The reservations, et cetera, will they be made through the recreation or will they be made through the...
Through the park office is my plan.
Down there, okay.
Kind of one-stop shop.
So it won't require any additional...
Not for that part, but for the cleaning will be additional, I understand.
Okay, we'll, so we'll put this forward for a vote at our regular Thursday evening meeting next Thursday, which is, by the way, the only time and place that the board does votes, in case we didn't get that before. Okay.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the 2017 audited financial statements. You'll see those on, starting on page six of your board packet. If you jump forward to page nine, you'll see the critical opinion statement, and the opinion of B K D, our auditors. In our opinion, the financial statements referenced to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the P O A as of two thousand, year-end 2017 and 16. That's the critical statement that you want to see. This information was presented to the audit committee, and the audit committee approved this, approved the statements. What we'll do next week is we'll ask the board to vote to approve the audited financial statements, and at that time, the information will get posted to our website.
When do we, do we do business with B K D on a year-to-year basis, or is there a longer-term contract?
It's year-to-year right now. It's year-to-year right now.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Just curious.
Which is the way it should be. I mean, occasionally, they should change...
I have no argument with that. I'm just curious. Just wanted to know.
Will we, at the regular meeting, will we have available the first quarter results?
Yes, you're going to have the first quarter results. Cash flow, you asked for that also. All that information will be available. Dwayne is working on the presentation right now.
Okay.
Next up, just a quick update regarding the election. Right now, we're at approximately eight percent. A little bit lower than what one would think, a little bit lower than some of the previous elections. In speaking with a couple of property owners, some of them have expressed there's nine candidates and hard to sort through them all. That may or may not be why, but we'll see how it goes along. Also, update on the beach at Lake Avalon. We're still on target to open on May twenty-sixth. They put in the handicap ramp two days ago, and they poured the, the supports for the volleyball court yesterday. And the volleyball court is partially, almost, almost together. They're still working on the bathrooms, but it's really coming along. And they have flattened out the ground area where the zip line is going to go, so they're, they're really doing well. If you haven't been there recently, I encourage you to stop by. On May eighth, we're going to have our first tour, and Joan, for the In the Know Show, filmed a live or a remote that will show on, appear on our, our streaming show that we put together. So it's really come together. We're real excited about it. And I think I indicated the story that Allison and I were out there looking at the beach, and a family shows up, and the kids were all jumping up and down, all excited, and that's pretty neat. So looking forward to that. Quick update on Branchwood. Carroll Electric finally finished all their work, and the Kinko started in earnest on Monday on the expansion. At one point, we were talking that it would be three to six weeks to do the expansion before we then go into the main building. They learned a lot from the soil content when Carroll was doing their work. We're looking more towards the sixth week. We're not looking for an increase in the budget. They added a contingency, but the soil structure is such that they anticipate it's going to be more towards the six-week timeframe, not the three-week timeframe that we were hoping for. So we're probably looking at a closure of the building towards the end of May.
The swimmers sit there, outdoor then?
That should take care of the swimmers because the, because the pools, outdoor pools will be open at that time.
Ruth, the, the original plan was to transfer the Branchwood program to the, to the pool, and Recreation Department is going to stop the Branchwood program when the building closes and start the outdoor program maybe a couple of days earlier, but it's a little, it's a little different, free structure, a little different who they, who they are. But there will be, should be no days when they don't have water classes.
One of our directors, who's, was viewing remotely, texted me, so I apologize for losing my attention there for remote. That's all I had to cover.
Okay, anything else from the board or from our dwindled audience? All right, then, the next board of directors' regular meeting will be held on Thursday, April twenty-sixth, six-thirty PM, here at the boardroom of the Country Club. And with that, we are adjourned.
Rob? We're not having a meeting after this?
I thought we were.
We are.
Far as I know.
So we're to stay seated.
I would have been...
No, no. You've got horns. You don't even know them.
Has to, has to take them.
No, you can burn it right off.